Call the word of the January 14th meeting of the City Council at Luttrell. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just for a moment of silence to collect your thoughts. Just hear silence for awhile. I'm sure you don't hear it much during the day. Give thanks.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Danke?
Here.
Mr. Martell?
Here.
Mr. Ballmeri?
Here.
Mr. Forsh?
Here.
Mr. Pollard?
Here.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes on the December 10th meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the minutes of the December 10th, 2018 meeting be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
Have a second?
My second motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion for the approval of the Fiscal Department reports of paid bills for the month of December 2018.
So who, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Forsh. Have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, this is our citizens' request related to the agenda items only. If you have something else other than the agenda items, we'll have time at the end. So if you have something that's on the agenda, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and speak loudly.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My name's Todd Dalton. I reside at 11 West Madison Street here in the city. And I also work for Public Works. And I am here, unfortunately, two of us, our regular union representative is not here, not make it, and I'm the chosen one. This garbage contract seems every five years or contracts up, we're here. For whatever reason. We have a problem with it. We feel that the city is making more money by us doing it, other than contracting it up. People may not know, even reading through the paper, that they want to contract out the roll-off services. All the garbage hauled, brought into, over our scale, Allied Waste to haul it to their I feel, we feel, at a higher rate. Therefore, not giving the city any money. I'm not a good speaker, so. Bear with me. I'm not. Years ago, when Mr. Bush was still with us, he had brought in a group of people, retirees from St. Vincent College. I call them the think tank. Professors, engineers, whatever have you. They came in and they looked at the city garage and did a tour.
Three copies.
They have looked at the books, I'm not sure. But they came back with their evaluation and ideas what should be done with the proceeds that the transfer station brought in. And I do not think any of their suggestions ever took place or voted on. And I think one of them is starting a separate account or something thereof. But, Mr. Jones, you and, you say, Mr. Jones?
I'm sorry.
You say, you say you and Mr. Griner are having a meeting, or?
We're having, yes, Mr. Griner and I discussed this yesterday or today, as a matter of fact. And we're having a meeting next Thursday to discuss this. I think there's some misunderstanding on the part of the union members and we'll discuss it at that meeting.
Okay. With all that being said, I hope that you're true to your word.
I've always been true to my word.
Oh, okay. I really don't know you. So, tonight, are we still voting on this?
Yes. I told Mr. Griner we're going to vote on it. And anything that, any concerns that two members of the union have, we'll certainly we'll address in that meeting on Thursday.
Okay. Now, that being said, tonight's vote, if it gets approved, the meeting is still on? Yes. Okay.
Just for, just for council clarification. Don Griner called me today and he had a question about the two of the employees were concerned. What the, what the issue is, is instead of having our two employees haul from the transfer station to the landfill, we're going to have Republic do that, which will free up those two drivers to do, we're looking to do some additional hauling locally. In other words, it'll still be hauled to the landfill, but they'll be hauled from like a hospital and from LMA and some other places, which will help increase the revenue stream, also reduce some of the wear and tear on our trucks, because if, you know, they're concerned about their employment, this will save their employment. We can't afford to pay $125 to $150 for a new truck. So we're trying to cut down on the mileage and the wear and tear. So this is why we're doing this. We've looked at it, Mike and I discussed it, we've discussed it with Republic, and I think this is a direction that we need to go, and also will help actually improve the revenue stream within the transfer station. I think, I have a question. There's a quick overview.
And so, sir, your position is that this is putting your job at risk?
No, no, no. Nobody ever had that.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm getting a little.
Some of the figures that were thrown at us just don't match up. For instance, right now, if we take a 30-yard box to your house, you're done with it, we pick it up, it's $190. It's a flat rate tipping fee, to be made. I'm getting the rate that Allied is going to get taking boxes out. They're going to charge us $2, $200 a box, plus tonnage.
You're comparing an apple to an orange. The 10 yards are still going to be, the 10 yards are still going to be hauled by us to the transfer station.
This is 30 yards, I'm talking.
Anything local within town is going to be hauled to the transfer station compacted and then put into boxes for Republic to haul out. The only thing that will change is that those two drivers, instead of driving a number of loads to the transfer, to the transfer station, to the landfill, they're going to be probably being used to do direct haul.
Charging $200 per trip, plus tonnage.
Figure out the wages and the benefits and the wear and tear on the equipment, we're still saving money. I think it differs on that.
So, so what, I didn't mean to interrupt you. So, so this increase then in the garbage rate, I mean, would it be less if we weren't making this change?
No. This is a separate component of the garbage contract.
So this has nothing to do with what we're voting on?
Right. Well, it's a garbage. The contract has two components. One component is garbage hauling within the city, and one are hauling from the transfer station. So, it's all the same contract, but that, the increase for the residents is not part of this, because that is everybody.
Mr. Jones, is this, is this a component that we're talking about today? Was this part of the bid packet, or is this an add-on item?
No, it's part of the bid packet.
I just, I don't understand how it would be part of the bid packet, but it had not affected that 26%.
It's two separate sessions.
The residential side, just to play with, two doors. The residential side is affected by the 26% and the other percentage of the latter, over here's the commercial side. Then we have basically charges built around tonnage. So, the increase.
Two separate entities.
Yeah, they're two separate programs. Yeah, the garbage of the residential, the garbage of Republic will haul from the city, doesn't go to the transfer station. It goes directly to the landfill. That's separate from the contractors who are remotely taking it up to the transfer station, having it compacted, and then that's hauled to the, to the landfill, same one, maybe a different one.
And you would like to discuss this in the area?
Yeah, we've actually talked about it. Because of the wear and tear on vehicles, we have some vehicles that are 2000, 2005, whatever it is, these are older vehicles, we really can't afford, we need the baby. And this will help reduce the overall wear and tear.
That's why I call them the rains from St. Vincent. You know, you put money away for a rainy side, for, you know, you keep a truck for eight to 10 years, so it doesn't nickel-don. You just keep getting rid of it.
Is this the, is this the SCOR office? Is that?
Yeah, this predates me, but it's basically what was done about six years ago.
18s?
Yeah, six, seven years ago.
Not really St. Vincent representative, their office is just about the same.
Right, right, it's a SCOR. Yeah, they, you know, we've done a lot to improve equipment, but we've taken, you know, if you have a choice, would you rather have a roll-off replaced or a slip-on? This time of the year, I think a slip-on is a little more important.
Every day of the year?
For the record, every driver, everybody up there drives trucks, not just two of us.
I understand that, but basically, I didn't say the same two employees, I said that there are two employees that haul to the landfill. Is that correct?
Sometimes three, because we have three trucks.
Usually, but usually it's two.
In summertime, all three trucks are usually going.
Which again, multiplies the cost savings in the city by not having to have three employees tied up on landfill.
Okay. Before I.
We can discuss this more.
Yeah, okay, yeah, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Todd.
James Miller, 1207 East Fourth Avenue, Luttrell. I wasn't going to talk about that, but I think, you know, it was about five or six years ago regarding the transfer station. I think when St. Vincent came in here and they made proposals, they made proposals, several proposals. And I think part of one of the proposals was to have no city employees running the transfer station, to eliminate those positions and have individuals so we could save money. And the council ruled that no, we're going to keep the employees, and I'm sure that the employees are concerned that they're going to be cut back or something. You know, that's, that's the, that's the job of the union representative to, to help his employees and that there. It's probably not to help the city. It's to save the jobs, and that's, that's his job, and there's nothing wrong with that. So, that's all I wanted to say about that. The other issue I have is the, the motion to advertise a budgeted wage increases for the city departments. Are they going to strictly put a percentage of increase, or are they going to advertise the actual wages that the employees make?
We advertise ordinances by way of summary. The ordinances, the full, complete ordinances are provided to the trip to the Law Library up in Greensburg, and the secretary has copies of the ordinances on her, on her desk or on her file.
I think it would be who, a lot of people in Luttrell to, to check and see what the department heads are, are making. And I'm not saying they're making enough or not making, you know, making too much. But we have probably some department heads that are getting very little for all the work they do. And that's probably the fire department is one of them.
Jim, one thing you might want to look at is, you can get a copy of the budget, and the budget has all that information. So, I mean, if you're looking specifically at a certain department, the budget has it. You're welcome to have a copy. Okay, you're, it is online. I'd like to just offer a comment to, a historical comment to what Jim had mentioned. Back six, seven years ago, when St. Vincent SCOR was looking at this, there was some discussion about selling a part of the transfer station to a company up in Somerset. The most important reason, one of the important reasons, I should say, of keeping the transfer station was the revenues that were generated. And those revenues enabled us to keep employees working both summer and winter. Okay, so, having the transfer station makes sure that employees have jobs in both seasons. Because in the wintertime, they'll do the streets, obviously, but the transfer station is also there to take part of their time, their work time.
Well, at the point when we did that study, Jim, I was on city council then, and I went on to a couple of different tours of different transfer stations. Absolute plan at that time was to, and as stated earlier, there was going to be a couple of employees eliminated up at the transfer station, and other employees brought in, and note what the typical operation was of the transfer state, which was going to be recycling and everything, and generating more money up there. And council at that time would vote it down. I just want that fact to be clear. That's what was transpired the last time when that study was done. And that's how it ended up being this. You, city swiss. And the council voted to keep the transfer station the way it was. Joe Bush was adamant against it. Todd, remember, those dumb guys out there were adamant, that it's time, they were in jeopardy, losing some of their jobs. And it was going to be outsourced to non-union employees, basically is what was going on. That's why it was kind of voted down.
We can discuss this further when, when it comes up for a vote. Anybody else have anything out there? Committee reports. Finance, Jim?
Nothing at this time.
Public safety and fire committee?
Nothing at this time.
Public works? Eric?
Nothing at this time.
Personnel committee? Nothing right now. Lucky events committee? Got anything going on?
There's not that much going on, but I did talk to Jared today, who mentioned there's a prayer breakfast, if anybody wants to attend through Westmoreland County Chamber of Commerce. It's Friday the 25th at 7:00 a.m. It's supposed to be a very nice event, so you can register on their website. Wanted to let you know about that. Is it the Ramada in Greensburg?
Thank you. Showcase committee?
Nothing, we won't be active until, not for a couple more months. We'll present another one tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Board and authority reports. Skip, you got anything?
Yeah. Josephine Street, we're done with the sewer line replacing that and the water line. And the reason we did that, for everybody's information, was when the city had to replace the storm drain, our lines were below. So we thought it was a good idea to replace what's there, because you know what happens when you replace one on the upper end. So we replaced the sewer line and the water line in that area. Paving will be done in the spring. The same way over here on Lloyd Avenue. We put in a new water line and sewage, because Pendott's taken out that bridge, anybody knows, there's a bridge there, right where they're working. And they were going to be replacing that soon. So we decided the same thing, put a new water line underneath and, and update the sewage line. So that's what's been going on.
Thank you. Any other board reports? Park Direct is having their 15th annual comedy night, January 26th, 6:00 p.m. in Huber Hall. $35 gets you all the laughs you can handle and dinner. Other than Adam's winner. Department reports, Mike's not here. Chief Lasman?
All I have is, after an extensive, extensive testing with civil service, we narrowed it down to two applicants, if you will. And after an interview, interview process, we have it down to one young man. Going to be on, going to give it to you guys for next month's meeting to vote on. His name's Sean Rosso. He has one more test tomorrow, psychological exam, and after he completes that, he'll have a couple other minor things to do with him, and then he'll be, he'll be ready to go. He's fresh out of academy, he just graduated the academy in November. He's a local hometown boy, and I think he's going to be a great addition.
Thank you. Ann?
I don't have a report.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Chief John?
Just, I'll be brief.
Yeah, you're on the wrong side, you're supposed to be over there.
I figured I could get to the door quicker. Just to touch base, we had a, we had a reasonably busy year, second most call total since the incorporation of the fire department. We had 1,018 calls, which was very busy for the year. We only had one year of busier, and we ran, I think, 1,100 or something. So it was quite busy this year, and we got through it, but I hope it slows down a little, keeps us running. And to kind of touch base on Mr. Miller's sentiments on, on the fire department getting more, my position, a lot of people don't know that I am not a full-time employee of the city. So I am deemed a department head, to explain that a little bit. And I receive a stipend from the city for the things that I do. Yeah, I am deemed to do a lot of the code on the fire side, and I'm on call 24/7, but I am still deemed a volunteer, even though I have sworn in under the oath of commonwealth. Slowly, you know, this is my 20th year I started, so I've been doing this a long time. But I am very grateful for what the city gives me as a stipend and budgetary items that the fire department receives. The only way I can receive more money is if they would make that position full-time, which I am now 60 years old, I'm not looking to get any more involved. I'm looking on the other side for retirement. I'll, I'll remain fire chief as long as my guys feel the need to keep me there. But I am in the public service part of it to provide community safety and protection. And as a volunteer, that's what I volunteered to do. But I do appreciate your concerns and your sentiments on, on what I get. Anything the city, you know, feels to give the fire department and myself is greatly appreciated, so. But those are some of the things that people don't know, and they don't realize that I am not a full-time employee. So, that's, that's probably the reason that you see some of the differences in the salaries and the money that's there. So, I just wanted to kind of let everybody know that so they understand a little bit.
Thank, thank you for your service, John.
Thank you.
Chief, in regards to the fact that you are so busy in the fire department, do you recruit firemen? Like you go out to the schools and try to get the junior firemen involved, or how?
We're involved with the unity township and Greater Luttrell School District, yes, we do go. And we do have recruitment intention, retention, our insurance through DFIS, we do programs through them to recruit. It's hard to get young members, because what happens is, in any community, what happens is, if you don't get employment locally, kids go to school, they go off to college, they graduate, and they relocate. So we take the men as 14 and 15-year-old members, as juniors, and they, you know, kind of progress up to the full regular member at 18. But once they go off to college, the longevity of those people, most times, are around 22 after they graduate college and then they relocate. If we're lucky enough, we retain, you know, some of them. It's a very small percentage, but it's tough. Right now, the big thing is keeping the members we have. I will tell you, the average age of the fire department in Luttrell is about 48 years old, 48, 50. And it's, it's, it's tough. And we're not the only ones that experience this, you know, this kind of downfall or setbacks through recruitment. It's everybody. In the 70s, you had almost 700,000 volunteers. We have right around 60,000. So that's how, that's how much the numbers have fallen.
Something to think about.
Well, we do, and I kind of tell the guys, I said, "Listen, we just have to do more with less." And that's kind of how we, we go about it. Everybody got to help each other when, when we're, people ask why I call outside companies in occasionally. It's not that I need 10 trucks, I need manpower at times. But you got to get, you got to get the manpower there, so you get the equipment that comes along with it to get them there. But, like I said, I don't do it for any monetary value. I've been a volunteer for almost 40 years now, and we do it because we love, we do serve the community, and that's kind of how we approach it, so.
John, have you guys thought of what you're going to do when they shut that bridge down over there?
Hunt.
Run through the alley?
Well, it's not the first time we've, we've done that. We will run through the alley there, yeah. Yeah, it's, we've already discussed that. And on the other side, have a number five out on the other side, they can go up Mission and over to Monastery and down Center, and get there that way. Six is already on that side, so they can go up the back way. But it's going to be a little, it's no different than the 981 bridge being closed. It'll be a little bit educational process where you just kind of, kind of re-initiate yourself to traffic patterns, that's all.
Mr. Ballmeri, there's a, there's a meeting coming up concerning that project, as far as traffic is concerned. When I know something, I'll be sure to make sure it gets, gets out in the media and let your folks know what's going to happen with that. It's, it's going to be a mess.
It's a mess now?
Right, it is. It'll be a bigger mess, I'm afraid, but.
Are you talking about Lloyd Avenue or the county bridge? The total closing on that will maybe be for the weekend. I mean, it's going to be one, it's going to be the way it is now.
My understanding on the letter I got from Pendott, Wayne, was Friday night, and then it was going to reopen Monday morning.
Right, it's going to be closed for the weekend. Yeah. I mean, actually, it closed permanently, but no, it'll be one-way for quite a while yet.
Yeah. Blame on us, Jim.
You got a three-month suspension. Blame on me. Well, we're trying to make things better in this town.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Well, we're going to have another travesty in 2020 when they do the rolling rock bridge also. But, you know, we find our way. I mean, it may take us a little longer, but we, we have meetings and we discuss the traffic patterns and how we're going to maneuver and adapt and change.
Mr. Jones, given that it's only a two-day closing, is there any contemplation of using side alley as a bridge?
I'm not sure. Yeah, John, what do you think on that?
Well, that, that notice you got, John, I got the same one. That gentleman actually called me and he said, "I know we sent you a letter, it may only be the weekend," but he said, "It may be more than that." So, that's why he scheduled a meeting, wanted to get, get together.
But, you know, we can, we can get our trucks up the alley to bypass that portion, so.
Yeah, there's, there's always a way around, but just.
It's just, it's just, it's a learning curve for everybody. It's, it's going to be a little bit of a mess for a while, but it doesn't only affect us, it affects everybody.
When is that meeting, John?
I'm not sure. He was going to get back to me.
I have a letter down in my office, too, I can't remember the date.
If it's not a problem, maybe if you let council know, those of you that might want to attend.
Yeah, we should, the council, you know?
Yeah.
No more than three.
She not make a decision?
Okay, Zach, I guess you're up.
All right, the first item on the agenda addresses the budget for wage increases. This is a motion item. It's a motion to authorize the solicitor to prepare and advertise an order. It's a motion to authorize the solicitor to prepare and advertise an ordinance for passage at the February 11, 2019 regularly scheduled meeting of council regarding the budgeted wage increases for the city officials and personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Forsh. All in favor? Uh, any questions? I'm sorry. Any questions or comments? If so, all in favor? Oppose? Motion passed.
Next item on the agenda, excuse me, addresses Mr. Janko's position on the zoning hearing board. This is a motion item. It is a motion to accept the resignation of Ralph Janko as a member of the City of Lake Grove zoning hearing board.
Can I get a motion? Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments?
Will we make it a precedent that anybody who resigns one position has to take on another position like Ralph just did?
I'm sure we'll get him into something. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Oppose? Motion to pass.
Uh, the next item on the agenda addresses the city engineer. Uh, this is a resolution entitled Appointment of the City Engineer. And it appoints Gibson Thomas Engineering as the city engineer pursuant to their proposal and fee schedule which they provided on December 11, 2018.
I have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Janko. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Baldner?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mr. Janko?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mrs. Waller?
Yes.
Uh, the next item on the agenda addresses the selection of a city solicitor. This is a resolution entitled Appointment of the City Solicitor. And this would appoint Tremba Kenny Griner and Kerr as the solicitor for the City of Lake Grove with no rate increases.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Second? Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Any questions, comments? All in?
Mr. Janko?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mrs. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Baldner?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Passes six to nothing.
Next item on the agenda concerns the annual financial audits. This is a resolution item. It is entitled Appointment of de Blasio and de Blasio Associates for Annual Financial Audits. This resolution would appoint de Blasio and de Blasio Associates to perform the financial audits for fiscal years 2018, 19, and 2020 as a three-year agreement.
Can I get a motion? I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Forsh. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Waller. Any questions, comments?
Just, were we on a three-year agreement?
Yes.
And just out of curiosity, are the fees structured relatively the same?
The fee structure is exactly the same.
Okay.
Okay, all in?
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mrs. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. Janko?
Yes.
Mr. Baldner?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Six to nothing.
The next item on the agenda concerns the Westmoreland County Comprehensive Plan. Uh, this is a resolution item. The resolution is entitled Resolution of Support from the City of Lake Grove for Reimagining Our Westmoreland. Again, this is a resolution item.
Can I get a motion to approve the support for the Westmoreland County Comprehensive Plan?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Waller. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any questions, comments?
I just want to say they did a really wonderful job on this, I thought.
I tried to find the word support. This is a double support?
Right, right. This is just basically saying that, you know, the, the city supports the, you know, the effort. Not financial support.
Was this requested by the county manager or is this something?
It's requested by the county.
All in?
Mr. Forsh?
Yes.
Mr. Janko?
Yes.
Mrs. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Baldner?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Six to zero.
Uh, the next item on the agenda concerns the incorporation of the 2018 ordinances. Uh, this is a motion item. Motion to authorize the secretary to incorporate the 2018 approved ordinances into the code of the City of Lake Grove.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Janko. Uh, any questions, comments? I think we ought to make the secretary use that floor. Mr. All in? What's the motion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes.
Uh, next item on the agenda is a resolution item. The resolution is entitled Approving the Bid of Allied Republic for the Provision of Solid Waste Collection and Hauling Services and approve a five-year agreement for the same. Uh, this resolution would approve the bid submitted by Allied Republic in the amount of 940,000 dollars for the provision of solid waste collection hauling services. And this approval would be pending in contention upon entering into a written five-year agreement with Allied Republic with final approval by the city manager and solicitor of that agreement.
Can I get a motion?
So I'll make that motion.
Mr. Janko, thank you. Second? Mr. Forsh, any questions, comments? All in?
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mr. Baldner?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mrs. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Janko?
Yes.
Six to zero.
Mr. Mayor, just a call in. I know there was concern about the first-year percentage, but if you look at the last contract, the last contract for five years was 19% upfront, and I believe it was 3% per year. So if you look at the total cumulative percentage, it's 31%. If you look at what we have this year, it's 26 upfront, 0 from year two, and six more percent, two, three, four, five, 32%. So there's only a difference of 1% between the two contracts, the five-year previous and this.
And something that, as we generate more trash and we have less and less places to put it, it's, as we generate more trash and we have less, fewer and fewer places to put it, it's only going to continue to go up. Especially countries like China don't want to take our trash, though.
Okay, any unfinished business? Unfinished business? On new business?
I just have something. One of my neighbors came to me in regards to cats in the Highland Avenue area. And I know that we handle dogs, but we don't do cats at all, right? So what are we to tell them if they're having problems?
Are they strays or does someone?
Yes, and so this person that approached me said there are a lot of strays in the area, but there are also pets that are coming into their yard and digging up the shrubs and, you know, causing problems. And so I said I would bring it, you know, to the attention of everyone and see what we can do.
If they're pets and they know who owns them, they can call me and give me that information. And I can send them a notice to stop that. Strays? We don't have anything about strays anymore, because our dog catcher can't take. So there's no one else who can take them and trap them anymore. So strays are just going to have to stay out there for their own.
And if we do happen to catch one, none of the shelters will take them anymore. It's too difficult to get rid of them. Unfortunately.
They can actually throw animals.
They won't take them.
They won't take them.
They're always full. They turn us down all the time.
Well, I'll pass some information. Thank you.
Only one other thing I can think of. Okay. Any more new business?
On, on the cats, there's a, there is, there is an organization out there. It's called CART. You might want to try them. It's County Animal Response Team.
They only deal with larger animals, John.
They're not going to deal with the domestics?
They deal with more livestock and larger animals. CART doesn't deal with cats or dogs. They, they, they're more into a, they're a rescue organization. Horses and livestock. Yeah. I've talked to them.
Okay.
And also in regards to the revitalization, just to let everyone know that Jocelyn's new storefront has been updated. And the next people that are due to get there is that is Scotty G's if the weather does cooperate eventually. Also, there's a new business on Main Street called Paper Heart Creations. I don't know if anybody's ever seen that yet, since it's on the right-hand side of there on Main Street. Maybe stop in and visit her. I hear that business is going well. And also, there's going to be a new business coming on Depot Street, right across from the medicine shop, soon to be announced. So we're still working on getting new businesses into town, so that's very encouraging. And didn't know, I wasn't aware of this, and I don't know if we talked about it before or not, but did we know that the farmer's market was going to be taken over by Parks and Rec? That's, that's something that we're going to be talking about in the future. So just an FYI, which would be a good thing, because that means that, you know, things are growing. And so something to think about. So just an FYI.
Uh, if we're losing a business, the bank is moving.
Which one is that?
Losing this branch, you're going into the unity branch. I'm meeting with them tomorrow, but I don't think there's anything we can do about it.
It seems that's the traffic.
I was just going to say, I think Citizens is also having less foot traffic down there across from Sheet. So I think that this is something we're going to start seeing.
They've eliminated their help. It's all machine-oriented.
Hey, any citizens request? Step up to the microphone, give your name, address, state your complaint or your kudos. Okay, city managers report.
Uh, just a couple of things. First of all, we need to recognize the fact that we have a new partner in our midst as opposed to just a, one of the hard-working employees. Our solicitor has been promoted to a partner. So I think we should, although I'm hoping that doesn't affect our rates.
So are you going to still be here, or are you sending somebody else? I will still be here.
In fact, speaking of new things, we have, we had a public works employer quit. And we're going to be, we made an offer to an individual who was interviewed earlier. And if he passes the background and drug test and stuff like that, we'll be, might be announcing a new employee next month.
Okay. Mayor's out of town, I don't know what she has to report, so. Uh, we, we need to have a, an executive session about personnel. So we're going to adjourn to our executive session, and we'll be back to adjourn this meeting.
You can adjourn now.
Since the executive session was stated and the reason for it was on the record, then we can adjourn and just go into executive.
Okay. If there's nothing else, can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? Thank you. Mayor, second? Thank you for all, all for coming.
Not bad, Bill. How are you, buddy?